This meeting of the Norwood City Council is hereby called to order. Please rise for the prayer and the pledge of allegiance.
Our Father, who art in heaven, is a body we congregate in these council chambers. We pray for thy divine guidance that we may do all things well according to thy holy will. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mrs. Stickley.
Here.
Mr. Blair.
Here.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Here.
Mr. Sankar.
Here.
Mr. Mumper.
Here.
All members are present. We have one request to amend the agenda, and that is to allow the mayor to give a report under the administration reports. Mr. Bonzal?
Yeah, I move to amend the agenda as stated.
Seconded by Mr. Blair, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Move on to minutes of the December 12, 2017 meeting, which were distributed by email. Mr. Clark.
Move to approve the minutes as of right.
Seconded by Mr. Blair, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We have no request to address council. So we'll move on to reports of standing committees, and we have one from the Committee of the Whole dated 12/18/2017 to the Honorable Counsel of the City of Norwood, Ohio. We, your Committee of the Whole, to whom was referred the ordinances regarding the C-9 Trust and Millennium Plan, beg leave to submit the following report. No action will be taken during this calendar year due to remaining unanswered procedural questions. It is recommended that this matter be placed back into the Committee of the Whole by the next council for consideration and implementation on January 1, 2018. Respectfully submitted, Donna Lake Chairperson, James Bonzal, Andrew Clark, Brandon Blair, Marilyn Hanahan, Joe Sankar, and John Mumper. Mr. Mumper.
I move the committee report to be accepted.
Seconded by Mr. Blair, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We'll move on to second reading of ordinances, and that is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into a contract with Rumke of Ohio, Inc., to provide for the collection and management of refuse, recyclables, and yard waste for the city of Norwood for calendar years 2018, 2019, and 2020, as well as for option years 2021 and 2022, and declaring an emergency. Mr. Bonzal.
Yeah, I mean, we have the second and third reading of the ordinance.
Seconded by Mr. Mumper, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have the second and third reading.
Ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into a contract with Rumke of Ohio, Inc., to provide for the collection and management of refuse, recyclables, and yard waste for the city of Norwood for calendar years 2018, 2019, and 2020, as well as for option years 2021 and 2022, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into a contract with Rumke of Ohio, Inc., to provide for the collection and management of refuse, recyclables, and yard waste for the city of Norwood for calendar years 2018, 2019, and 2020, as well as for option years 2021 and 2022, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Clark.
Move to pass the ordinance.
Seconded by Mr. Mumper, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have all three readings.
Ordinance authorizing the Clerk Treasurer to certify unpaid bills for the cost of grass cutting to the Hamilton County Auditor for filing as a lien on the tax duplicate of the owners of said parcels, and to be collected as other taxes, and declaring an emergency. Mr. Mumper.
I move we suspend the rules, have all three readings.
Seconded by Mr. Blair, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have all three readings.
Ordinance authorizing the Clerk slash Treasurer to certify unpaid bills for the cost of grass cutting to the Hamilton County Auditor for filing as a lien on the tax duplicate of the owners of said parcels, and to be collected as other taxes, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the Clerk slash Treasurer to certify unpaid bills for the cost of grass cutting to the Hamilton County Auditor for filing as a lien on the tax duplicate of the owners of said parcels, and to be collected as other taxes, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the Clerk slash Treasurer to certify unpaid bills for the cost of grass cutting to the Hamilton County Auditor for filing as a lien on the tax duplicate of the owners of said parcels, and to be collected as other taxes, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Mumper.
Move the ordinance to pass.
Seconded by Mr. Blair, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We'll move on to the second ordinance, and I'd like to remind you, there is a duplicate, Exhibit A, that was on your desk this evening. So this is an ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2017, and declaring an emergency. Mr. Sankar.
Madam President, I would recommend we have all three readings of the ordinance.
Seconded by Mr. Mumper, is there any discussion? Mr. Sankar.
Yes, Madam President, we had a finance discussion last week with Mr. Stitt and some other members of council, and kind of the fire department was there as well, went through a lot of the different changes you see here, where to have the balances match up for the year-end appropriations. There are a number of personnel changes that were being increased that were, had to be made so we could meet the payroll through the end of December. There is the one change on the sheet that we have in front of us that was on our desk tonight. There's a change on there in Fund 81 that was reduced from the one that came in our packet for, after checking, the tax duplicate that we filed with the county showed that we were expecting $6,000, I believe, that $6,032.37. That's what was on our final submission to the county. And so even though it was over, we can't file another one with the county, so we'll make that change at the beginning of next year. So that's the reason for the Exhibit A to exhibit A on our desk. So this will hopefully clean up a lot of items going into the end of the year here. There will be additional changes when, once the end of December comes around, and we can close the books for the entire, not only December of '17, but entire 2017. And talking with the Treasurer's Office, earnings taxes continue to run strong again here in December, so hopefully we will close out 2017 in a little bit better shape than we were looking at on this from last week. As far as on the, well, we'll get to the next one after this. So hopefully we can, you know, get this behind us through 2017 and move forward to '18 and go from there. So that's the.
Thank you, Mr. Sankar. Is there any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to suspend the rules and have all three readings. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have all three readings.
Ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2017, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2017, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2017, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Clark.
Move the ordinance to pass.
Seconded by Mr. Mumper, is there any discussion? Mr. Bonzal.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. And just for anybody that's watching at home that might have a copy of the, you know, there's a lot of changes that get made, and a lot of it's just very standard. I mean, we're reducing, if there's any extra payroll money in any of the keys, we reduce it. If there's a few keys that have gone over, you know, we kind of add stuff to it to make sure things balance out. So I'll be voting yes on this today.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzal. Is there any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to pass the ordinance. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. The last ordinance is an ordinance making permanent appropriations for the expenditures of the city of Norwood, Ohio, for the calendar year ending December 31, 2018, and declaring an emergency. Mr. Mumper.
I move we suspend the rules, have all three readings.
Seconded by Mr. Blair, is there any discussion? Mr. Sankar.
Yes, Madam President, at our finance discussion meeting, we actually had discussed the 2018 appropriation ordinance to begin the year. There were discussions with the state auditors on this as well, and the recommendation was to pretty well follow the guidelines of our submission to the recovery plan to get started in 2018. And as we see how the year is going, we can make appropriate changes after submitting them to them, but that was the recommendation. That's how we came up with the numbers for this 2018 permanent appropriation.
Thank you, Mr. Sankar. And that was, I can report, that was the recommendation of the Financial Planning and Supervision Commission, too.
Yes, ma'am.
So we appreciate your work on that. Excuse me, is there any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to suspend the rules. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have all three readings.
Ordinance making permanent appropriations for the expenditures of the city of Norwood, Ohio, for the calendar year ending December 31, 2018, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance making permanent appropriations for the expenditures of the city of Norwood, Ohio, for the calendar year ending December 31, 2018, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance making permanent appropriations for the expenditures of the city of Norwood, Ohio, for the calendar year ending December 31, 2018, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Mumper.
I move the ordinance to be passed.
Seconded by Mr. Blair, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We have no introductory readings of resolutions, so, Mr. Mayor, you are up for administration reports.
Thank you, Madam President. A couple of quick things. John, would you please come up?
Sure.
Be careful, we've got the bumpers on here. We have the Mumper bumpers on, so.
Yeah. Your grandkids are waving at me, aren't you? We have a proclamation for John, but we also have a resolution. It was slipped around, it was written, and I told people that I would never say who it was, but I like the word transparency. That's things that he'd be, have to be. So it was Keith Moore and Tim Gary. So we'll just keep it among ourselves. I don't want to give them up in public, but that's who it was, and I'm not taking the heat for it. Thank you very much. I'd like to read the resolution that they drew up. Part of it is in the proclamation. These two guys are great writers. Thanks, Keith and Tim. John T. Mumper is so well-traveled and worldly, he has lived on a single street his entire life. And whereas John T. Mumper has represented the residents of the 4th Ward, particularly those between 2150 Cathedral and 2210 Cathedral. Whereas John T. Mumper's grandchild, Sue Fun, has now exceeded the city of Norwood's street budget. Whereas John T. Mumper's Parks and Playground Committee time will be transitioned to actual time in the parks and the playgrounds. Whereas John T. Mumper will now chair the committee of the whole Mumper family. And whereas John T. Mumper will now be playing Candy Crush and Words With Friends on the second and fourth Tuesday of each month. Whereas John T. Mumper is thrilled that he won't have to go to a 10 o'clock meeting on January New Year's Day. Whereas John T. Mumper ran out of children and grandchildren to swear him in office. Norwood City Council recognizes December 26, 2017 will be the last council meeting for John T. Mumper. Norwood City Council further resolves that the Mumper bumpers will no longer be considered to be vital safety equipment in the council chambers. Whereas Norwood City Council further resolves that the ban on repaving Cathedral Avenue may now be lifted. Whereas Norwood City Council further resolves, the city of Norwood may now move forward with the council chambers chair replacement. So that's the one that Tim Gary and Keith Moore wrote.
He needs help from his family.
They don't want to take it. Some of it is in this proclamation. First of all, let me say, I asked Kathy to come up because if you know John, you know Kathy. It's a team. And when you're involved in this kind of political stuff in this city, you better have somebody at your side that can be tough and take the abuse and take the accolades at the same time. So it's not an easy job, and you all know that because you've been there. John and Kathy have been down this road so many times, and their family is a big part of it. And as you know, John's family is a big thing. He's had his family on his swearing-in, he's had them on his TV program, he's had them everywhere. But the two grandkids waved. Me, not you. Whereas John T. Murphy will attend his last.
Murphy. D O. Who wrote that one?
Did we have a D O challenge?
Well, I thought you were my husband. I thought you were my husband.
Mary Ann will get you. Where, John T.? Mumper will attend his last council meeting as a member of council on Tuesday, December 26, 2017. And whereas John T. Mumper is a lifelong resident of Norwood and has long distinguished career serving as a council of Ward 4, clerk of council, councilman-at-large, president pro temp, clerk pro temp, member of the Finance Committee, Law and Ordnance Committee, Streets and Parks, Infrastructure Committee, chairperson of the Committee of the Whole, and sealer of weights and measures. Good Lord. Oh, Lord. Whereas John Mumper is a member of Holy Trinity Men's Club, the Irish Shaver Club, the Holy Trinity Show Variety Players, and Purcell Alumni Association. Whereas John Mumper and his wife Kathy have six children, Scott, Brian, Jeff, Joe, Kristen, and Katie, and 17 grandchildren. Oh. I'm having a hard enough time with you. Whereas John T. Mumper will now chair the committee of the whole Mumper family, grandchild Sue Fun now exceeds the city's street repair program. John T. Mumper Parks and Playgrounds Committee time will be transitioned to actual time in the parks and playgrounds. John T. Mumper having to run out of children and grandchildren to swear him in office is thrilled that he will not have to go to council meeting on New Year's Day. John T. Mumper will be missed for his dedication, good humor, his motion to adjourn meetings and significant consternation he's made to the city. Now therefore, I, Thomas F. Williams, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Norwood, state of Ohio, do hereby proclaim December 26, 2017 as John T. Mumper Day. From the bottom of my heart, I congratulate you on it.
I'd like to say a few words. Just a few words.
You got it written down?
I've always wanted to be a 4th Ward Councilman since the time I was in high school, as a matter of fact. And so I've taken care of that as best I know how. And now I can watch some other fools sit there. And my fans are all sitting out here, you know. It's good to have them here because it'd be more fun if they were here all the time. Thank you for being here, everybody, and thank this group for times had and not had, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Merry Christmas.
We have no other requests to address council. Does anyone have any unfinished business? Any unfinished business? Seeing none, any new business? Mr. Sankar.
Yes, Madam President, as was mentioned in the mayor's proclamation and resolution for Mr. Mumper, the, on January 1, we will have our first council meeting of the new council that will take place at 10 o'clock as an organizational meeting. Followed by at noon, in the middle school auditorium, we'll have the inauguration and swearing-in of all the new members of council for the next two years. So I invite everybody to attend on noon, January 1, at the Norwood Middle School for the swearing-in and of inauguration of 2018 elected officials. So we'd like to extend everybody an invitation to that.
Thank you, Mr. Sankar. Is there any other new business? Mr. Sankar.
Yes, Madam President, I too would like to thank Mr. Mumper for his service on council all these years. It's been a pleasure having him as my left-hand man here, able to converse and sometimes on good things and sometimes on not so good things. But he has been an outspoken advocate for a number of issues while he's been on council all these years, and clerk. And do wish him the best in his future endeavors, which are sitting out in the audience. He's got, he'll have plenty to do to keep him busy. And so I do wish him the best and congratulate him on time well served.
Thank you, Mr. Sankar. I just want to, I don't know if any people remember this, but I don't know if it was 2010 or 2012 when during the inauguration, as we, I was being called up to be sworn in, I was called as Donna Mumper.
Hello?
Whoever that is. So John's been my husband for a few years. I doubled the number of grandchildren I had in one fell swoop in one second. So again, I want to reiterate, thank you for your service for all of these years, and I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Mr. Blair as well.
I wish.
This is his last meeting, and so while you've only been with us two years, it's been, certainly been an eventful two years, and there are so many times when you stayed late, when you were late for work, when issues of real importance were being discussed, and you took the time to stay and take part in those discussions and to have votes. And I just want to congratulate you and thank you as well for your service the last couple of years. Mrs. Hanahan.
I would also like to say thank you to Mr. Mumper. I never know what's going to come out of his mouth, and he always catches me off-guard. And it's been a pleasure. I would also like to thank Tammy Stickley.
I was going to be next. We didn't forget you.
A pleasure working with her and also sitting next to Mr. Blair Harrell also. Good luck for all of you who aren't coming back.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, Madam President, that was going to be my next thing after I got him out of the way. I was going to say, thanks for Mrs. Stickley for sticking out these two years and with a young baby at home, and Mr. Blair for being around, especially working at night, having to leave here and then go into work after working here. So good luck to both of you, and thanks for your service.
Thank you.
Mrs. Stickley, you had life-changing events during your two, your two years here, and it's been fun to watch your daughter grow up and see her on Facebook, and you'll envy us. I'm sure they'll be happy that you're going to be able to spend more time with her. So thank you very much for all of your service. Yes, Mr. Bonzal.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. And, you know, I too want to thank Mr. Mumper for the service that you've given to the city. You've poured, definitely poured a lot into me, and I've learned a lot from you. There's many times that, you know, we disagree, there's many times that you wish that I would just, you know, be quiet, but I really appreciate that you were here and that, everything that you've done. And for Mr. Blair, I just want to just make sure that, you know, you go out with your head held high, because I'll tell you, there's many times, and just want to let everybody at home know, too, that, you know, Brandon was, you know, something happened in Ward 1, and Brandon would be calling the police chief and trying to find out information, trying to make sure things were going on. And he'd do all this behind the scenes. He wasn't out, he wasn't publicizing it, he wasn't doing it for the credit or for the love, but he was doing it because, you know, he cared. And there's many stories of Brandon doing things like that. So I just want to thank you, Mr. Blair, as a Ward 1 resident myself, and just as a resident of the city, thanks for everything that you did, and good luck in your future endeavors. I have a feeling that we might see you in the future somewhere, but.
I'm done.
Yeah, and Mrs. Stickley as well, Tammy, yeah, I mean, thank you. There's many times I've called you to get your opinion on things, and, you know, even on something that Mumper said one time, I had to call Tammy to ask her about it, and it, I won't go into that story now, but it's about the court fines and court fees, and Mumper's encouragement of us to get more of those. So we had a fun discussion about that. But I just want to thank you again for your service, wish you the best with your daughter, with Matt's jobs, and of course, your law of practicing, and just hope that goes well for you.
Thank you.
Is there any other new business? Mr. Sankar.
Madam President, just let everybody know, we've had a few little, small bouts with snow already this year, and the salt trucks have been out. We do have salt available to us, and so we have had that out, working it, so hopefully that'll be the end of it, and can move forward. So just so everybody knows.
Mr. Blair.
Yeah, I just wanted to piggyback off everybody and say congratulations to Mr. Mumper. He's spent a lot of time and effort here in the city, and I know he's involved outside of just this wonderful council stuff. Seen him at many baseball games, I'm sure I'll see him at many more. Seen him at many baseball games, I'm sure I'll see him at many more, and it's been a pleasure being up here, and I wish the next council all the luck in the world, so.
Thank you, Mr. Blair. Mr. Clark.
Yeah, I just want to thank Mr. Mumper as well. I don't know if he recalls, the very first time I ran for council, I was standing at View, and I was kind of, you know, the whole Republican-Democrat thing, wasn't sure all that was working, and you broke the ice and came over and shook my hand and thanked me for running and just encouraged me, so I just wanted to say, I really appreciate that and all that you've done for council. You've been a wealth of knowledge, and you share your wisdom and stuff with us, and I really, really appreciate that. Mr. Blair, I'm very thankful for you, always somebody I could call up and run something by, and just, all that you've done, I echo what Mr. Bonzo said, there's countless times where you were never recognized for all the things you were doing for Ward One, but you did it anyways, and you weren't interested in that, so I'm very thankful for that. Mrs. Stickley, it's been a pleasure serving with you. We went to high school together and went through similar life things at the same time, so, but it's been great working with you and all of the knowledge that you've poured in with your law expertise, so thank you and wish you all the best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Any other new business? Mr. Stickley.
I wasn't going to say anything, but I guess I will. I just want to say thank you to everybody who has, you know, extended their well wishes to me. This is not easy, so for everybody who's watching, I just want you all to know that this is not, running, being on council is not easy, and I don't want you to judge other council members, because this is a lot of work, and you don't understand until you sit in the seats how much work it actually takes. I did not know that either. Completely caught off-guard on the amount of time that it took. So I do want to thank everybody here and everybody who is taking the time to run and who is not going to be serving, because I understand the time and effort that it goes into actually doing this position, so thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mrs. Stickley. Any other new business? We'll move on to communications. We just have one, a letter from Jerry Stoker regarding a request for waiver of vacant building maintenance license.
To Norwood City Council, Joanna Hutchins, representing Scott Winter and Winter Enterprises LLC, the current owner of the property, is requesting that City Council grant a waiver from the prerequisite that requires them to obtain a vacant building maintenance license. The authority for City Council to grant a waiver is stipulated within the vacant building ordinance. Please find attached the documentation for your review and consideration. In 2008, City Council, in a proactive action, passed the vacant building ordinance, which regulates standards for vacant buildings. This ordinance includes the mandatory requirement that property owners obtain a vacant building maintenance license. The rationale for the creation of this ordinance was to improve city neighborhoods by expecting vacant buildings to meet certain standards and to allow the City of Norwood Building Department personnel to continually monitor the upkeep of properties in efforts to prevent vacant structures from becoming a disgrace to the community. Scott Winter's waiver request states that he desires to have an exemption from the license requirements for the following reasons. In August 2016, the property sustained over $1.4 million damage from the windstorm. Scott Winter is currently in federal court over a dispute with the insurance company over the coverage and damages. The owner states that the property is supposed to remain as is and cannot be repaired until the federal court has ruled, which will require testing and analysis is performed. Scott Winter does not have personal funds to repair the building until the insurance claim is paid. Therefore, in consideration of the above, I would recommend that City Council consider granting the waiver request for not more than one year. This recommendation is contingent upon Mr. Winter securing access to the site in order to protect the general public. If you have any questions considering any of the above, please do not hesitate to contact me. Jerry Stoker, Building Commissioner.
It's your pleasure. I'll note that the vacant building license does, can give up to a two-year waiver for the license fee, but it is the recommendation of Mr. Stoker that it be for not more than one year. Mrs. Hanahan.
I'd like to know if the Building Department has been there, and is it safe at this time, just being, just sitting there, not in the condition it is? If it has, if it's had a million dollars' worth of damage, is it safe right now, as far as just being out there? For kids who still go in there, you see kids on bikes in that area.
I don't have the answer to that, Mr. Mayor. Do you know?
He's been.
I'm assuming they are.
Ordinarily, I wouldn't go along with this because of the past history, but with, and I can assure you of that, but being tied up in federal court, that can take a long time, plus he's got legal representation, and I'm sure the Building Department has been in there looking. I know Mark's talked about it a number of times, which part of the agreement is that we have access to that building anytime we want. And if that's the case, that we are denied or obstructed in any way, we will come back to you with a letter asking you to respect that, but this kind of makes it easier for us and the Building Department to get in and check on it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So what is your pleasure in terms of the letter and granting the waiver? You have broad leeway, so you can do it up to two years, you can do one year, you can do less, that's totally at your discretion. Mr. Bonzo.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I would propose, I'll throw it out there, I would propose that we authorize Mr. Stoker to grant a three-month waiver and then allow the next council to, maybe the housing committee of the next council to look at it and see if they want to do it further than that.
Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Mr. Blair. So the motion on the floor then is to receive and file the letter.
Yes.
And to grant a three-month waiver for the next council to consider? That's fair representation of your?
Yes.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Mayor.
That's really, that's probably a really good idea, and I'll tell you why. That makes Mr. Winter understand that somebody's looking over his shoulder, and so a three-month thing is not a big deal, and it does give the council, and maybe we can give more explanation for you and give the new council more information for them to review, but actually, that's a good idea.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to receive and file the letter and grant a three-month waiver. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzo.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We have no absent members to excuse, and I don't know, we're going to be in constant, we'll be in constant council meetings without Mr. Mumper here to adjourn, so. Mr. Mumper.
I move we adjourn and never open it up again.
I don't think that's an acceptable motion.
I'll second that, Madam President.
The motion on the floor is to adjourn with Mr. Mumper not ever having to open it up again. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzo.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.